Good evening. I'd like to call to order the work session of the Cabarrus County Board of Education for Monday, September the 8th. This meeting is now in session. And before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I'd like to recognize Larry Hunter. Larry, thank you very much for being here. Larry's the SRO at Royal Oaks Elementary and he's providing our security tonight. We certainly appreciate all your hard work out at the school and for all that you do for us. So, thank you very much for being here. And with that, board members, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
I'll second it.
A second by Mr. Schu. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. The agenda has been set and we will ask Dr. Chris Lauder to come to the podium and give us our opening of school report. Dr. Lauder, welcome.
Good evening. There are obviously a lot of things going on at the beginning of school and we thought it would be a good idea to start out with just some of the highlights of us beginning and some of the things that are new for us this year for Cabarrus County I know Dr. Van Hughclum has talked to you about high school academies and what those entail. We have two this year that are certified and underway. Information Technology at Cox Mill High School and Hospitality and Tourism at Hickory Ridge High School. If you see some of the comments down on the bottom of that slide, one of the things, again, Dr. Van Hughclum has talked about a couple of times, is that 80% of high school graduates live and work within 100 miles of where they graduated from high school. And so, trying to beef up offerings and connect with our business community as much as possible is something that we're looking to do through this National Academy Certification. Something, obviously, that we're excited about, these two schools are excited about, and our other high schools are coming onboard as we move forward. Blended learning is another big initiative this year. We kind of put the background in from 2010, 2012, how we set this up and how we started working forward. And now in 2014, again, most of our high schools are doing blended learning classes where the idea is to take a very effective teacher and have them have contact with and affect more students by using blended learning. So, they may be at school on Monday with 25 students while 25 students are working at home. And on Tuesday, those two switch. So, we're putting as many people as possible in contact with effective teachers and also using this form of technology to work with our students and teachers. And some other forms of technology and adaptive technology to use that in different ways with different students, to meet students kind of with their needs as much as possible because different formats are more effective with different students. iCurio is something that, you can already see the link on our webpage, and get lots of questions, I think periodically, about textbooks and what we have textbooks for and what we use them for with limited amount of money from the state for textbooks. iCurio is kind of the way to think of that, I believe, is an online textbook, online resources that we put together. And this past summer, the curriculum team worked with over 200 teachers to revise over 500 curriculum documents to try to align and sustain what we want every school to work on and then obviously ways for them to use their individual skills with teachers and students. So, that's a big initiative that we're just kind of rolling out. Some subjects are more advanced in that than others, but it's something that we'll keep adding to as we move forward, grade levels and subject areas. This area, safe, caring environments for learning, there are three things where we really, many school systems don't have any of these three things. We've had two of these for a while and we've kind of completed the last part of our school resource officers with elementary this year. We have partnerships with the City of Concord and the Sheriff's Department. This year, we did get a grant from the state, from North Carolina, to partially fund officers at elementary schools. Essentially, we pay for six officers and the state pays for 12 officers. So, we looked at that to balance and make sure that every school is at least assigned an officer. And even at Mary Frances Wall and Long Preschool, which are not technically schools, they still have coverage and have someone that's working with them at least partially during the day. We have nurses in all of our schools since 1999. Many districts do not have that, something that we're very proud of. And then, we have athletic trainers, which is a partnership with our hospital. And we have two athletic trainers at every high school and one at all the middle schools. Again, many, many districts don't have that at all and our district's kind of led the way in that area for quite a while. This year, Kids Plus, we, all of our 19 Kids Plus sites are five-star rated childcare centers. And on the first day of school, we had 904 students enrolled in Kids Plus, which is an increase, I believe, Dr. Probst said, of about 150 students. Is that right? From last year? So, very successful and something that we're very proud of. In transportation, we have 254 buses and seven vans. Those vehicles travel 27,116 miles each day. We transported about 25,000 students in the first two weeks of school, meaning a day, I'm sorry. Safety inspection this past year was much improved where we went from about 112th in the state to in the top 20. So, again, something that people are very interested in transportation and how much we use our vehicles. As far as teachers, we have 3,817 employees, 1,941 teachers, 221 of those teachers are new to Cabarrus County schools, and 68 of those were first-year teachers that we welcomed to the orientation. This year, one question that we had on the first day of school, we only had seven and a half vacancies in the classroom on the first day of school. That target becomes a little bit of a moving target because as we get more students, there've been some allocations. But on the first day, there were, there were only seven and a half positions that were not filled and some of those have already been filled since the first As of Friday afternoon, we had 30,743 students. I have not seen the numbers for today yet. They may have increased a little bit, but that's the last number that we were given formally. About 125 of those students are homeless, according to John Basselis. And the largest day in the first 10 days of breakfast, we've served 5,607 students breakfast and 15,991 students lunch. We have a $288 million budget. We manage over $1 billion in assets. And last year, we gave out 5,302 W-2s for our employees. Again, our current enrollment is 30,743. When we finished last year, the last day of school last year, we had 29,952 students enrolled, which is an increase of 791 students. As you know, that's a school. Our state projection for this year was 30,519 students and currently we have about 224 more students than the state projected. The projections that I actually worked on for our district were very close to what the state projected. I think mine were about 30,505. So, I actually had about 14 students less and obviously, we're considerably above that. Right now, most of that growth looks like it's in Harrisburg. Harrisburg Elementary School, Hickory Ridge Middle and Hickory Ridge High were all significantly, had significantly more students in the first 10 days than we projected. And as we look at that, we know that the Hickory Ridge area and the Cox Mill area are probably our two highest growing areas. But what's interesting is, you can look at those areas and see, for example, in the Cox Mill area, there are six neighborhoods that are actively issuing permits. And in the Hickory Ridge area, there may only be two. But the two in Hickory Ridge, the homes are built faster and people are in. So, we know that it's coming, but sometimes it's hard to predict exactly when that permit will turn into a home with people living in it. We do know that two neighborhoods in Harrisburg have issued over 200 permits since we got out of school. So, in the last two months, that's kicked up significantly. And that's where our projections were the most under as far as students. We've had almost 100 more students just at Hickory Ridge High School than we projected. And Harrisburg was 80, 90 or so students. So, significantly, that's where we underprojected. So, again, I know there are lots and lots of things that are associated with the beginning of school. We just tried to hit a couple of the major things that we knew changed and to give you some information that a lot of people are interested, like our enrollment and how many people are eating lunch each day and how many people are riding a bus. So, I'll be glad to answer a question if I can. It's across a lot of areas or certainly hearing your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Lauder. We will certainly give everybody a chance to make some comments. And I guess I'll, I don't typically start, but I am going to start, that it seemed like to me, we had a very smooth beginning of the year because we typically, and this is my fourth, fourth one, we get a lot of email from both parents and staff of everything right at the beginning. And I mean, we really did not get, there was just very, very few communications of problems or issues. And so, 100% on Dr. Shepherd and the staff and administration, not have anything to do with us sitting up here. It's you guys, you did a phenomenal job and we really, really do appreciate all your hard work. So, thank you. So, with that, we'll have, anything specific for, for Dr. Lauder? And we'll start with Mr. Walter.
Well, I thought that was an excellent report. We didn't, I hadn't seen a report like that last year, but that was, thank you very much. That was very educational and it gives us a lot of information for the public. I was out at Irvin, again, going with, detailing with, like it said, that it was very, very smooth. We've had a lot of leadership changes this year and I've been very impressed so far on how those things have gone. So, I don't really have a whole lot of additional comments to that.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
Again, I want to congratulate everyone, staff and everyone. Same thing, we've just, just a few things that's come in, but it's, that's to be expected. One of the questions that someone had asked me, and I couldn't answer it, and maybe someone can put some light on this. They said, "Well, we've heard a couple of schools are giving free lunches and free breakfasts. Is this true?" And I, all right, tell me about this. I said, "Well, maybe there's a pilot program or something." So, if this is true, tell them where it is or what it is, okay? Your own, Kelly.
Well, and unfortunately, I'm afraid I'm going to mess up on this. We have two pilot programs that we're running at Royal Oaks and at Wolf Meadow, free breakfast and free lunch. We applied for the grant and we received it. And regardless of free and reduced status, all students receive meals.
So, that's, that is for everybody?
For everybody.
Okay, so they were-
Now, we don't force the children to eat it. We offer it. And if they still want to bring meals from home, they can. But we offer the breakfast and the lunch.
So, that was true. They asked me and I said, "Well, it sounds like some type of grant we've gotten." And, you know, because they were very worried about that, that their money was coming. And I said, "This sounds more like a grant, but I will check on this." And so, it was a grant that we received for that.
And kudos to Frank Friarilla who applied for those grants and we received them for, because of his hard work.
Well, tell him thank you. And I just wanted to clarify that to our viewing audience. And thank you very much. The other thing that, that is one, and I want to thank our transportation because I know they've worked very hard with a lot of the scheduling. And I think that's about the only thing that I had, had gotten in was the scheduling request from different individuals. And the other, only other thing I've heard about is the explosion at ATL and talking about, when I say explosion now, let me clarify this. Talking about the population of the students. Yeah, not boom, but talking about so many students that this was kind of unexpected because a lot of parents had never seen, you know, cars lined up like they had. Does anyone know why or what, what was, what, what has caused this?
That was a little tougher. That's about 60 or 70 more students than we projected them to have. And we projected them to be flat, which was somewhere around 875 students. So, we're not exactly sure. We don't have a neighborhood to point to. We don't have a lot of permits in that area. And so, it's actually something I've spoken with Ms. Bass, the principal, quite a few times on. Do you have a good answer for this? And so far, we do not have a real specific answer to point to 60 or 70 students at that school, which is quite a few to add. And, and be that far ahead of where they were last year is a, is a very interesting question right now.
Well, if anybody gets, because I have had especially some parents in that area because they said, "Gee, we're not used to having cars lined up or having to wait." And again, I know we haven't seen growth in that area like that. And so, that was a question that was asked. But thank you for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, do you have any questions or comments?
Actually, I do. Thank you again for this. And I hope that this will be a report that you'll repeat next year because I think this is really informative, kind of gives us a great overview of what, what's happening at the beginning of school and kind of where we are. Several things, high school academies. When you call them an academy, are they an accredited type? Is that an accreditation type to make that, to make it that statement?
I think Jason's coming because he's going to be able to answer that better than me.
It's more for the public's knowledge, but I think when we call academy, I want to, there's something behind that, isn't there?
Right. It's the National Academy Foundation. So, the two that are coming onboard this year, Hickory Ridge and Cox Mill are in their, they passed their first round of accreditation with the National Academy Foundation. Northwest Cabarrus, JM Robinson and Mount Pleasant will be coming on next.
And, yeah, and Northwest is doing the biotech course study right now, but they're working on their accreditation.
Exactly, yeah. So, remember back about a year and a half ago, when we start, kind of launched this idea, we started to do this on our own. And so, Northwest was kind of the lead high school in that work. We've kind of learned as we did and we found this opportunity to partner with NAF. So, now Northwest is going to circle back and start, start that work with NAF, if that makes any sense.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. My next question, on the iCurio, go ahead, Jason, you can come back on the iCurio. Is that, have we gotten that so that it's firmed up in every subject level?
No, not yet. We have, it's built out in some of our subjects, I would say about 50% right now, K-12. So, we're continuing to build that out. So, for example, in, we're picking our, our subjects with the highest need first. So, in elementary, you have social studies and science. Middle school has pretty much everything except for not all of the ELA, English Language Arts. And then, high school has science and math. So, we, the other delay in that has been the work of our summer curriculum writing team. So, for example, social studies had a lot of reworking to do. And so, we obviously didn't want to do all that work before they rewrote the curriculum. So, now that we have the curriculum done, we can continue that work. Yeah.
Okay. Allison, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sorry.
Are you using this iCurio product?
I have not. I have not in the classroom used it, but I've, I've been working with it, planning with it a little bit.
We would love to hear your input one day when you have a chance and you have a chance to work with it.
Okay, I definitely will.
My next question is dealing with the transportation. Do we have 274 buses, but we're only using 254 to transport students? Is that, is that why that is that way? The way you-
I'll let Mr. May answer that.
Good evening. Are you asking if we have 274 on the road?
Total, total buses in our inventory.
No, we have more than that. But we have 274 on the road.
Okay, this says 254 and that was why I was-
Well, I apologize. I'm including vans as not necessarily a bus would use for transportation too.
Okay. This was just different from what I thought. I know we have some spares and we're sitting at, are we sitting at 10% spares at this point?
We're just under 10%.
Okay. And my final question is dealing with the number that you had on students. You said that we have 30,743 students and 15,991 lunches. Is that free lunches? What is, what does that mean?
That is total number of lunches served, paid and free and reduced.
Okay. And what are our free and reduced numbers looking like at this point?
Oh, gosh. I know we're 2% ahead of where we were last year, but I can't, you know how we're close to 42 or 43% by the time it's already turned in? Right now, we're around 28, 29%, but it still takes another couple of weeks to get all those forms in. All I know is that we're a good 2% ahead than we were previously.
Okay. Yeah, I just saw that number, 1591. I was going, we already got the free and reduced lunch number?
No, that's a combination of bought and free and reduced.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schumaker, on that free and reduced, I think the last number I've seen, it was like 31%. And I've seen that in a real recent report.
It was in the Friday report. I was trying to remember. I couldn't remember the number, so I didn't want to pipe up. But it was, it-
And I was trying to remember what I wrote, so I'm so sorry about that. But I just know it's, we're not up to the 43% where we were last year.
Anyway, whatever it's worth, that number is out, okay? The only thing that I would add, Dr. Lauder, it's excellent report, good numbers, everything's always going in the right direction and I'm real thankful for that. Only thing that I would add is on page 10 of your presentation there, for those that didn't catch it or whatever, I think that's the rendering of the new Odell school.
It is.
And I thought maybe we'd make that mention. So, I don't know whether the TV guys can get that in or not. But that's the rendering of the new Odell. And it's like the little heading says, "Here we grow again." So, I thought that was, was pretty neat to use that school rendering. That's all I have. Excellent report.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison?
Again, kudos to everyone for all your hard work to make it happen again so smoothly this year. I can attest to the lack of emails and, or the very few and the tremendous smoothness of the whole process of getting going this year with so many moving parts. I know in the Harrisburg area, but surely in other parts of the county as well, there was a great deal of social media, you know, talk and anxiety about more students arriving than were expected or anticipated. My question is, where do they go? I went around and I just, on the first day of school or the open houses, I guess, just stuck my head in the door and said, "Hey," to the principals if I happened to see them. And, you know, started up a conversation with them. And several said that they were getting more students than they anticipated. So, my question was, where do they go? There aren't any more necessarily classrooms. What, how does a school accommodate X number of more students than anticipated? What is done at that, you know, very crucial juncture to get those students in the right classroom for them? I guess what I'm asking is, is a teacher's classroom set at 20 in anticipation of extra students possibly arriving and then two or three extras being added in the first year? What, I guess what I'm saying is, what are the logistics and how do you find a place for students with such short notice?
So, the answer, I think, is it depends on the facility and, and the capacity of the facility. So, Harrisburg Elementary School, for example, I believe we thought they would have about 870 students. They ended up with roughly 70, 75 more than that. So, Dr. Van Hughclum and Ms. Jones are, as we went through the summer, are looking at that and allocating them more teachers when we know that growth is coming. And they've certainly worked on that at all three of those schools, which is, they all three got some extra teachers. So, but I'm pretty sure that capacity of that building, I'll have it in front of me, is around 1,000. So, at Harrisburg, they have classrooms, they can handle that. Hickory Ridge Middle is in, close to the same boat. Again, I don't have those numbers in front of me. Hickory Ridge High, I think we list the capacity at 1,500 and now she's got about 1,575. So, she is over listed that. And I think the answer there is, one, some of the classes are, are bigger. So, we may have 35 or 36 students in a class now as we're accommodating that. And again, they're working on teacher allocations to hopefully take that down. So, sometimes that's put some extra desks in classes that would have 30. Now, all of them have 35 or so. The other part of that is they have to get creative about who moves out of a class and who moves in. So, sometimes you can have, this is Mr. Lauder's class all day long, second period is open. They have much less of that now with, okay, where is a place that people aren't or could this class meet in the library? Now, I haven't specifically met with Ms. Klein about that, but I know she was having to reorganize some things based on that. So, the school wasn't necessarily built for it to operate that way, but can we put people in different places to figure this out? And they're doing quite a bit of that.
Another question is on the blended learning concept and the actual implementation of blended learning. When I was a teacher, long ago and far away, getting a student open a book at all was difficult, much less to, to find this type of student who's motivated, self-motivated, will take to the task of learning on his or her own kind of volition. So, my question is, when you have a teacher who's in charge of numerically more students to teach a blended learning, in a blended learning environment, my question is, how do you select the students who are ducks to water, if you will, will take to that task and be successful at it as opposed to any other kind of general way of selecting? How do you make students successful in a blended learning environment when it probably is brand-new to them? They know computers, but they don't necessarily know how to apply themselves.
So, a lot of education upfront. So, our schools did a lot of parent nights, student information sessions in the spring of this year when they were going through registration. So, when they were preparing to sign up for their classes in, you know, April, March, April timeframe, they would talk to their kids and say, "Here's an opportunity that you have. Here's what it's going to be like. If you feel like you can learn in this way, you might want to take this course. Here's some of the benefits for that." Also connecting it to what they're going to experience in, in the university and college setting, saying, "Okay, when you go to the university, you're going to be experiencing a lot of these online platforms where, you know, professors are going to house their content and materials through an LMS of some sort like Blackboard or we use Schoology." So, that's why we have seven teachers in the entire district that are doing this model. So, the pilot was really, you know, intentionally small.
And so, during the year, how do you and to what extent do we, I don't know, reemphasize that or keep students on task? Because I'm sure up to a certain point, they're used to being lectured in the normal, traditional-
Sure.
-way of going into a classroom, which is kind of passive. Suddenly, they're in an environment where, oh my gracious, this is what this is really all about and it's all on me to, to go through this material. How do you support and reemphasize to them periodically, keep at it and, and keep yourself motivated at this because it's really on you-
Right.
-the student as opposed to passively sitting in a class and waiting for the teacher to lecture at them?
So, I mean, the number one data indicator is going to be their classroom grades. So, as the teachers are teaching through the course and they notice that students are not performing well or they're failing for any reason, we have some safety mechanisms built in. The number one safety mechanism is, you know, just because they're in part of this pilot doesn't mean we can't require them to come. So, we have some built-in time during the day for them that we can say, "No, you have to come to this extra session or you have to be face-to-face with the teacher because this isn't working really well for you at this moment." Then, if, if we come to a place where the student and/or the teacher and family say, "This isn't right for me. Like, I'm three weeks into the course and this isn't fitting with me." We have a backup class for all those kids to drop into that's going to hold them harmless. So, they can, you know, there's biology first period blended and there's a biology first period that's not blended. So, if we have a child that it's just evident that it's not working for them, they can immediately transfer into that class and, and go to traditional.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, my first comment is, I love your slides. I wish I could get you to do my slides at work. They look so nice.
I have to say, Mike Martin, who works with our pictures, is the genius behind those slides and helped with, just stepped out, of course, but he's the person who gave me a lot of the pictures and makes them look that good. So, that's all him.
Okay. Well, it's, it's great to know that, that we've got that talent on, on the staff. It's also just really good news that Cabarrus County must be doing something right. And I mean Cabarrus County in the broadest possible definition, Cabarrus County schools, Cabarrus County government, Cabarrus County citizens. People want to live here. People want to send their children to our school. So, this is just much better than the alternative. Let's put it that way. So, I did have one, maybe observation or question and that, that it's related to the impact of charter schools. I know that the Caroline International School closed their facility in Harrisburg and opened one up near, kind of almost equidistant from Odell and Cox Mill on the west side of the county. And I'm wondering if, if you can attribute some of the growth at Harrisburg and, and some of the lack of growth at Odell and Cox Mill to students that used to go to Carolina International and Harrisburg now going to our schools and students that used to go to our schools out west now going to Carolina International?
Yeah, that's a great question. And one of the, I think, the most difficult things we dealt with on trying to predict because, you know, when you're looking at growth, some things are factual. Kind of when, when a charter school is either new, which we had a few, or they moved to the other side of the county, it's in effect new in some ways of who they're going to be, you know, serving. And we definitely accounted for less students in the Cox Mill area because it's so close, the Carolina International School that you mentioned is so close to Cox Mill Elementary. So, we predicted that they would lose some students. The reality is, they have gained, they're, they're above where we projected them at at this point, pretty even, but about 20 students over. So, more than we thought. And Odell's actually down a little more than they thought. So, if you look at permits and growth in Cabarrus County, the Odell area by far looks to be the place that would explode the most. And they're down 50 or 60 students from where we projected, which is absolutely not what we would have thought. So, the, the long and the short answer of that is, it's a guess and that is not what I thought the guess would be when we were at the end of, of the school year last year.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that overall the, the news is good. But I do have a question. When will we have relatively firm numbers on the number of charter school students from our region that we would then have to fund?
I'm looking at Ed because, and he probably, I'm not sure if he's prepared for that, but I know Kelly- but I know Kelly, that's all done through finance. And so usually after the first 20 days is when we will absolutely know how many student, how many Cabarrus County students are enrolled in those. Because remember, especially in the areas that you're talking about, often the majority of students are actually Mecklenburg County students. So 60% of those students may be from Mecklenburg, but we will find out there's 222 students that live in Cabarrus County. But that normally is all done through finance officers and after the first 20 days of school is my understanding. So Ms. Klutz really gets that information and some of the people in her department, I think, actually have to call to try to get it preliminary to take our best guess, but official numbers are after the 20th day of school.
Okay. So probably next month we'll have a firm number. Okay, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Well, good report. I won't, I won't glob on anything else with that. So we thank you very much for your, for your time and effort. And we will move along to 3.02 and we will ask Mr. Meehan and Dave Burnett to come to the podium with solicitation of offers to purchase the Mount Pleasant Middle School and property. And if, board members, if you remember back in, I think, May, maybe it was June, the board was approached on a couple of different occasions about not building at the current site and doing a different site. And so this board decided we would put out a notice that we would entertain any offers through the end of August. So this, that period is now expired and we've got two proposals from, two proposals from the same group. But that's what this report is for.
Yeah, you pretty much summed up what we've been working on. We've advertised solicitation of the offer for the purchase of the school and the grounds for quite some time. Mr. Burnett is going to come up and present the two proposals and we can have a discussion about that.
Thank you. And a little bit about the process first. The August 29th was the deadline. The board in receiving an offer is not committed to sell the property, is not committed to receive any of those offers. The offers, if you choose to pursue, would be subject to the upset bid process that's set forth in the North Carolina General Statutes. If you did pursue an offer, Cabarrus County would have the right to match the final purchase offer. So that's part of the process there. The offer does state the intended purpose for the property and I'm sure you've seen the proposals. It was for the Aquatic Center for Eastern Cabarrus County. And that was for both proposals, if you look at Exhibit A, you know, from your, from your information. So it was Community Center and Aquatic Center. So the two offers really differ very slightly, just slightly in approach. So really on the very first page, the one offer, and this was for, we get Proposal One, we'll do that first, that was $500,000 and that was for water and sewer improvements. It was up to $500,000. They did have some limitations on where the site would be. And on both of these proposals, really, we can't really evaluate the proposal without doing some research on our end to give you a comparison. So that has not been done and really one of the things that the board would need to discuss over some time is how much time and effort or do we need to put into that? So Proposal One was, purchaser will pay up to $500,000 for the cost of adding water and sewer to any site chosen within the city limits of Mount Pleasant or adjacent property for the purpose of building a new middle school. They do cite that the expectation that the school board would not have to incur the cost of demolition and asbestos abatement. They do put the price tag on that at $1 million. That price isn't, is not unreasonable. Certainly we would be hoping that it would be, that we'd be able to do it for less than that, but that's not, at this point, that's not an unreasonable figure. Proposal Two, again, very similar to Proposal One. That offer is stated at a $300,000 purchase price. Again, again, they do cite the $1 million for not having to demolish the existing school or do the asbestos abatement. And again, that was for the Aquatic Center and Community Center. And that's really the details. If you have any questions, certainly can go into more information.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. I do know that we have probably several questions and we will start with Dr. Phillips.
Okay. Well, you already answered my first question, which was, well, do you think that $1 million is, you know, an accurate estimate of what it might cost? And you've said, yes, it probably is. I know we just are going through that with the old Odell school, so you have a sense for the market?
I hope it's high, but for, you know, this stage, it's not, it's not an outlandish number by any means.
I think the other thing that we will have to take into consideration when we evaluate this versus the alternative of not accepting it and building on the existing site is the additional construction costs we would incur by building where you have an existing school. Obviously, if you go to Greenfield and you can just build right away and you don't have to build around the existing school, that would be cheaper. Do you have any sense yet or what would it take to get a decent sense of what the additional cost would be to build the new school at the existing site?
If, it may be smart or wise for us not to get into too many details. As we, if we consider other sites, we would be looking at the cost of development for the other site, plus we'd be looking and comparing it against the development costs at Mount Pleasant Middle School. So I don't know that we want to divulge, you know, too much information on that. But I will say that we do have a concept where we believe that we can construct the new middle school on the existing site with very, I'd say relatively few sequencing issues, that the new building actually could be built at one time. And that's, that's a, that's a big step forward. That was one thing that we really wanted to accomplish and we think that we have a plan that will do that.
Well, that's good to know. So I think I'll just end by saying, I consider both of these to be serious proposals and I thank the Corporate Funding Associates II LLC for taking the time and putting in the effort to make that offer and to give us this option.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, do you have any questions?
Well, I'm trying to, you know, discern, I guess, what's really here, $500,000 versus $300,000 outright. $500,000 in the city of Mount Pleasant in its city limits for sewer and water hookup if the site, if another site that we choose is within the city limits. Is that it essentially?
That's, yes, that appeared to be the proposal and it's up to $500,000.
Up to, correct.
Right. And go ahead.
And so in the construction of a school of approximately that size, how much does it cost to hook up for water and sewer? I mean, I guess is $500,000 a really attractive amount or relatively small amount in the grand scheme of things of actually building a new building?
It depends 100% on where the available services are.
I'm sorry?
It depends 100% on where the available services are, how far we have to go and what we have to go through to get there.
So we haven't planned that far out to pin that down yet?
Yeah. And one thing, if I could also go back to Dr. Phillips' question about the demo cost for perspective, the Odell Elementary School demo was $363,000. The price of the asbestos abatement was $155,000. So that's a little bit over five, half a million dollars, I believe I did the math right. So again, just for perspective.
Okay. Well, at least it gives us some other options to consider and appreciate you following through with this and bringing the data to us and also to the group who's making this offer that we might be able to accommodate. I hope what we do will be a shot in the arm of Mount Pleasant and this region of the county and I hope what we do ultimately will be of good economic benefit to that region and for its tax base and its homeowners, community satisfaction with their neighborhoods and what we can contribute to, to help build and maintain in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And Mr. Schue, before I come to you, when he said it depends on the location and you said, "Oh, we hadn't planned that far," that's part, that's the rub of the deal. We got to go find a site somewhere. So that's what he's talking about. It depends on where that is versus where the current utilities are. That's the number that, that's the unknown and whether $500,000 is enough or not, you have no idea until you go pick a site. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure, you were asking a good question and I just want to make sure you understood that part of it. So, okay, great. Mr. Schue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Without doing a lot of elaboration on this, I think that Proposal One is a proposal that I could wholeheartedly support for a number of reasons. Well, up to, up to a half a million dollars to provide water and sewer to a piece of property within the town limits of Mount Pleasant or adjacent property. So that or to adjacent property, I think, extends a little bit beyond the city limits. But here, that's not here or there. But the way that I'm looking at this, trying to look at it, here we are in 2014. It'll be 2017 before this school can be opened. And I think that we're still planning on, what, 740 student capacity? Is that correct?
702 and 858.
858 will be the core capacity and it'd be for 702.
Yes.
Of course, a lot of things can change between now and then, just like it has in Harrisburg, just like it has in the Cox Mill area, because all of us know that the growth is beginning to pick up in Cabarrus County, although the ORED study didn't predict a lot of growth in Mount Pleasant. But with the new interchange there being completed and then if, you know, by chance we decide to locate this new middle school somewhere other than the own site, then that will probably spark some more development as well, which will make the school in that event maybe even too small. But one of the things that I want to look at, looking downrange, 15 or 20 years from now, the Mount Pleasant Elementary School is going to need some attention, some serious attention. And the way the situation is right now with both the schools in Mount Pleasant, we're basically at a deadlock. We can't go anywhere else. I mean, if we build on the current site, that's where we'll be. There's nothing else we can do there. And then whenever it comes time to rebuild the elementary school, we can't do anything there, so we'll have to be looking for another piece of ground. And it seems like to me, it's only good business sense, the way that I'm looking at it, that if we can save a million, million and a half in demolition, asbestos abatement, and then get an additional $500,000 to help own the water and sewer, that that money could be put toward a piece of land that could accommodate both schools at some point in the future. Even if you didn't buy, but what DPI recommends, 45 to 55 acres for the middle school and 20 to 25 acres for an elementary school, well, if we just bought to 45 to 50 to start with and got an option on the other 25 acres for the elementary school sometime down in the road, maybe a 10- or a 15-year option on that property, that we would be doing ourselves a big favor. We would also be doing the town people of Mount Pleasant a big favor as well because all of us, well, not all of us, Carolyn, I think, was on the board and myself when we rebuilt Bethel Elementary. And of course, that's on the southern tip of the county and it ended up, ended up turning into a nothing and it's still a nothing. Vandals have gone in and taken everything, the copper, the wiring, I mean, they've totally vandalized it and it stayed on the books for the county for years till they finally ended up almost giving it away for 20 or 25,000 dollars and the owner of it has still not done anything with it. And we don't want that to happen in another building that could be repurposed, that could be used for the betterment of that community. And what happened at Odell had to happen because the land scarcity on that end of town, it's not like it is on this end of town. You can't find land in that area and the land committee searched and searched and searched and that's why we ended up, as a board, deciding that the Odell Elementary site would be ideal. And that's what the ORED study said as well. But anyway, I don't want to elaborate any longer because I feel like that what's trying to be done here by some of the leaders in the Mount Pleasant area and the, as Dr. Phillips had stated, this is a serious proposal. They're serious about doing something with the school and I think that what they have in mind here would make it right for everybody. And so I could wholeheartedly support it. I wouldn't look at number two though, because 300,000 flat, that'll help us, but that other 500,000 would help us because we know what water and sewer cost. We've been there.
What we would look at is, we would look at the cost of extending the water and sewer. And if it was less than $300,000, you know, then, you know, the better deal is $300,000.
Well, it all depends on site location. And then of course, there's nothing in that area that possibly could serve the capacity of a school that large. So it's going to, it would probably require some extensive water sewer work.
And one comment about the sewer and enrollment and population growth, the ORED study did project that to be flat and sewer is a very huge part of that. Sewer, development follows sewer. So as we would be creating a, and extending sewer service, that is opening up that territory for development, for higher density development.
That's right. And that's what I was saying in the beginning. So you, we're right on, but I think Proposal One is a good proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schue. We'll go on to Mr. Schumaker.
Well, I kind of disagree with you, Mr. Schue. I think it's a, I appreciate the hard work that went into this proposal, both proposals. And I know that they were trying to do the best they could to guesstimate where they would be and what values they could get, but at the same time, they're in business to make and save money as best they can. We're in the business to give the taxpayers the value that they need. We have 27 acres over at our, over at our middle school there in Mount Pleasant right now. $500,000 doesn't even give you $18,000 an acre and I think everybody here would love to have a, anything for 18,000 an acre. Also, there are a lot of unknowns. As we already know, when we were looking at the Odell demolition, estimates came in all the time when Mr. Whitkey was here and all, that it would cost a million dollars to tear that school down. We've come in here and it's 500,000. When you submit it to a competitive bid, all of a sudden, the numbers start changing. So a million dollars doesn't look that good to me. A million dollars looks like it's an inflated cost because we've got a competitive bid, 163,000 or so for the abatement. You know, we thought that the asbestos abatement was going to cost a whole lot more than that, but they got through a building that was built back in 1929, which is even older than this building. And so now they're going through the demolition and that whole total cost of that's going to be 500 to 550 or something in that range. On top of that, there are unknowns. There are several pieces of property, the two that they point out are located away from sewer service, gas service, water service. I mean, someone's going to have to go in the ground and you don't know what you're going to be mitigating when you get into the rock issues and that kind of thing because Mount Pleasant, as you well know, it's called Mount Pleasant because it's vertically challenged. There's a lot of elevation changes out there and those elevation changes incur rock and you could incur, especially with sewer, a lot of rock excavation. So you have a tremendous number of unknowns that are going to be going on when you try to go to these other sites. $500,000 doesn't begin to talk to those, nor does it begin to talk to the fact that we're going to be trading 27 acres and all we're going to get is $500,000 for it. The other issues that we have to deal with are the road access issues and what kind of roads that we're going to be dealing with and what kind of road improvements we'll have to deal with. Over and above the specter of the water, the sewer, and we would probably want gas out there because they do have some gas in that area. So those kinds of things, I believe, don't make this a very, very presentable argument for us and for this board to delay the project. We've got a new Board of County Commissioners, which you will be coming on, and you'll be faced with the task of how we continue to move forward on Mount Pleasant Middle School. I would like to get that school built sooner rather than later and I would submit that task to you and to the upcoming board when they come in in December, that we move that forward. To continue to delay it in research for these types of adventures, I believe, we would have to have a lot more information about the other sites, do some very, very good cost analyses, do some borings to understand what we're going to be dealing with, with the rock that's... the rock that's underneath, because I guarantee you there's rock underneath, and understand what the costs are between all the different sites that we will be competing with, and that would be what would have to be involved before we could ever accept this offer. That would delay this process at least six months, and we would be sitting there with an architect that now has to sit sideways. We can't provide you with the information now that your board needs to, when you move to a commissioner role, we could not provide you with the information that we hoped to provide you all with at the beginning of the year, because now we'd be delaying trying to do research on these other sites. So in my own, my own personal opinion is these offers fall short of what we need and not, do not envelop the costs and don't allow us the time for the research that we need to get to make the Mount Pleasant people and Mount Pleasant Middle School whole.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter?
One of the questions, I agree with Barry on several issues. One of them, I still think there's some unknown factors out there that we need to have so we can see a complete picture. One of them being, would the ball field, you know, the ball field that's currently on the site, those are very expensive when you go to put them on a new site. And we've got that right now. And are we still going to be able to use that ball site or those fields if we build on the current site? And like I say, yeah, no, repair would have to be done on the current one, but we've got something to start with. Do you know if the architect is saying we're going to keep those fields?
We're looking at, if we occupy the existing site, the football, the stadium, really, that wasn't in the scope, you know, so it stays as it is. The field that is beside it, the baseball field, really, that will be modified, because we expect that we're going to have a drainage feature through there that we have to accommodate. The ball fields that are across North Drive, really, we're placing the school on those.
But the big stadium, though, that would stay?
Yes.
And again, that's a lot of cost there. And to try to put it on another site, we'd have all that additional cost.
Well, your middle school standards, we don't put stadiums on middle school fields.
So then, they would lose that.
They would not have a stadium, unless the board wanted to do something different.
And that, I don't think the money would be there. So that would be something that could be lost. And so that's, that's one of the things we, and again, I think a perfect example, cost of abatement. We've seen that, that, you know, a million dollars may be too low. And that's prime property. And my thing is try to go out. But then, again, land, I think, has had a very good idea. I think we need to be banking land, because we see that we are going to need probably for elementary school. And we, land, they're not making any more of it. We need to be looking down the road, and we need to be banking land. We've seen the numbers that were just brought to us tonight. We are still, I mean, the children are coming, and we need to be planning for the future. So that's something, we need to be optioning some of this land. When people come and tell us about properties that are available, and we see these numbers, we need to be putting some options on land. So that's something we do need to be doing. So I think we still need to, I would rather see what the proposal we've got number-wise on the site itself before I'm ready to say, yeah, let's go. So I'm still kind of wanting to see the whole picture with everything before I'm saying that this is the most wonderful thing, because I think there's amenities there that we could not replace at another school, and the children of that school will lose that, those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter?
Excuse me, just looking at my notes. So they responded to everything we asked for in the RFP?
There were a few things that they really deferred to later. If the board had interest, then they were going to provide the additional information, and that was 5%, the 5% requirement on the deposit and some of the other financial information.
Obviously, they put a lot of time and effort into that, and they did respond to our request at the time limit. I do think we ought to look into it further, cost-benefit analysis-wise, and really see if there is a, if it does make any sense. I see several issues with having the school at the site. By closing that North Drive is a problem for the community. Shutting off those ball fields is a problem for the community, because those fields are used now. I mean, that stadium, as Ms. Carpenter said, even if we're at a different site, we could probably still use the stadium. Can't be that far from wherever a new school would be in Mount Pleasant proper. So I don't think that would be necessarily a need to replace that. And that, if the school could be built closer towards the center of Cabarrus County, that's helpful for us as far as filling the school and relieving some of the overcrowding at some of these other schools that are coming. I guess my other question here is, what does Mount Pleasant think of this proposal? Are they aware of it? Have they seen it, or is this the first time that this has been made public?
This is the first time it's made public.
So we don't have any feedback from the folks? I think that might be, I'd like to hear what that feedback is. Can you explain again what the upset bid process is? What is, what would that be?
Tell you what, I'll interject there, because that's something that we will talk about with our attorney in closed session. And Mark, jump in if you need to, but the actual acceptance or rejection of the proposal, we will have to do, we will do in open session. The discussion of the upset bid process is a closed session item that we will do, we're going to do, we're going to at least talk about the process tonight, I don't think.
Okay, well, I appreciate you clarifying that. I wasn't, again, I wasn't quite sure we have, we have these two proposals and what the next steps would be. And is there an appraisal on what the value of the property actually is?
No.
There isn't? Okay, those were, those were my thoughts that I had chatted down here. So again, I appreciate that they did respond to our request, and I think it's worth at least looking at it seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I guess I've got a couple of comments, and Ms. Carpenter touched on something that I had made a note, and I, for some reason, I'm, in my mind, I've been thinking, I knew where we were talking about putting the school, but for some reason, I thought where the school is now was parking and a ball field or whatever, that we were not just, you know, that we weren't going to totally get discombobulated on the ball field piece. So just to reiterate, the current baseball field will be a wet pond. Is that what?
A portion of it.
Okay.
We expect there will be a usable field.
But somewhere down there, big enough where that's not going to be a baseball field?
We do expect it to be a usable field. It'll be a little smaller.
Could be soft.
Certainly.
Okay, well, that's fine. So we don't completely lose the field, but where the school's going across the road, but where the current school is then becomes parking and whatever else we can fit?
Yes, and let me clarify one thing. Certainly, we haven't designed it yet. So my expectation, you know, for that field, you know, is certainly that. It's an expectation. It hasn't been designed yet, so certainly we could have a surprise, a negative surprise. Not anticipating that, but it's, again, it's not designed yet.
Right.
So I can't answer that question.
But I guess your, your vision or expectation was what I was getting at, to make sure that kind of lined with what I think, at least for myself, was sort of anticipating. So we would like to keep as much and as many of the fields as possible. As long as we're going into the design, that's fine. And just for the general public, that drainage feature, we don't control that. That has nothing to do with us. That's at the state level. They tell us how big it is, and you can't argue. So, and they tell you where to put it, and you can't argue. So you can try, and you might gain a smidge, but you, basically, you're stuck.
And mother nature kind of helps to take where it goes.
Yeah, that is true, too. But I have seen it where you would think that that's the case, and they tell you to do something else. But, okay, well, that's fine. My general impression of the offer, and again, maybe I went into this incorrectly, but I was thinking more of it would be a little more complete. You know, we're going to purchase that, and we've set, you know, this parcel over here for X number of dollars where you're going to go, we're still kind of having to take it and go figure it out on our own. And we already had that conversation with the town. We've let them, I mean, not this proposal, but when it came up before, and they did their sort of gyrations of, well, we want it there, and no, no, we don't. The big hangup we had then was, where are we going to go? And how are we going to? Well, they've identified two parcels that we can go negotiate, but again, that's us going out, taking the time, as Barry said, to figure all that out and do the geotechnical work. So I'm not saying that it's dead or a done deal. It, I like, I would love to have room to plan for the elementary school, and I don't want to have tunnel vision, which I can get sometimes. And to me, I'm eager to have the site, we've got the architect, get moving so we can get over to the commissioners and tell them, you didn't fund us last time, we did what you taught us to do, which was design a school, now fund it. So I will ask this board to make sure I don't get sidetracked with my tunnel vision. But that's kind of where we are, as far as I'm concerned, and where I want to go. But we will discuss this further. We've got, the legal aspect, we'll discuss in closed session tonight, and then after that, we will know. Mark will give us some guidance on how to proceed. So thank you very much for the report. Does anybody have anything else they want to add to that? Dr. Phillips?
I did think of one, one aspect that had come up before, that the current site does not have access to natural gas, so we have to use, I don't know, is it propane, fuel oil?
Fuel oil.
And?
And that's with the elementary school, that's with the high school, too.
Yeah. What was that?
None of the Mount Pleasant schools have gas.
Have gas, yes. So, but I understand that there is a pipeline that's been added or will be added that will get close?
There has been discussion, and we have heard that there's interest in extending gas service to the high school. That hasn't happened yet.
Oh, it hasn't happened yet, okay, because I was wondering if maybe one of these other alternative sites that have been recommended, you know, proposal might have natural gas service already.
Yeah, and from the gas company's perspective, certainly, they're going to be looking at, you know, does it justify the cost? Like, if you were to locate the middle school at the high school, that might be very interesting, you know, to the, to the gas company. You know, it may not satisfy any other, you know, needs, but, but something like that where you have, where they have the demand, you know, that will get their interest more.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, did you have one more comment or question?
And just one nerdy kind of thing here. As valuable as these resolution-type of presentations are to us, as we move forward with understanding the trade-offs, the positives and negatives of all these options, I would really appreciate some kind of tabular, table format of a column of if we choose this, we pay for or lose X, Y, and Z, and build that out over time so that, in a very condensed but one-page thing, and pardon to all legal persons in the audience here with us tonight, but so that we can see in a more single page or a few pages, side-by-side comparison of each of these trade-offs. That's really how I can make a decision based on more, you know, facts and data than the resolution-type of format that we have here.
Yeah, and the resolution, of course, was from June.
Correct.
And that's what started it. That was the solicitation, you know, offer. So we haven't analyzed, and we haven't reviewed, and we don't have a recommendation. And really, that was a bit by design. You know, it may not be so good if you were to hear that we're out, you know, in the Mount Pleasant community, talking land purchases and things like that, that may not, that may not be the type of message you want to be hearing, you know, from, from the public. So again, you know, as a result of your decisions, you know, tonight would be our next step.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Okay? Fantastic. Thank you, guys. Oh, sorry. And now we will move on to 4.01, and we will welcome Mr. Ed Emery to the podium. Kelly is out of town, and so we'll be eager to put Ed on the hot seat for tonight. It's baptism by fire, right?
There you go. Good evening. Thank you. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present in front of you this evening. First item I want to talk about is the item for consideration for the September 15th meeting, and is the fiscal 2014-2015 budget resolution. This is an annual process, and the document you have there in Board Docs is the legal form of the budget. Again, it's an annual process, and it is up for approval. The board approved or adopted the budget in April 2014. Subsequent to that, the local and state budgets were formalized, and then some changes were made. The budget came back to the board on August the 4th and August the 11th, which is about 30 days ago. And, you know, Kelly told me there's been plenty of time for questions and answers. She's answered many questions along the way, and she felt so confident to go on vacation. She said she feels that we're in a really good position to go ahead and adopt the budget resolution as it is presented today.
Okay, thank you, Ed. We certainly do appreciate that, and we will have a chance for board members to get some final questions answered, and we will start with Mr. Walter.
Thank you. You know, my question to you earlier was what was different between this year and last year on the items here. You've answered two out of the three. You're going to come back and look at the other, the three or other five, whatever it was.
Correct.
Correct. So overall, I didn't have any questions. We've, again, we've had this information for quite some time as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any questions or comments to make on the resolution?
No, the only request that I would like to have, instead of just putting it under consent, I'd just like for it to be under just read or vote.
Okay. That will be done. Mr. Schumaker?
I have no questions.
Mr. Schue, he's good. Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips.
I don't have any problems with the numbers. I do have a request that's kind of similar to Rob's. I'd like to be able to see the columns, the numbers for this year, side-by-side with the numbers for last year, so that we, we and the public can see what's changed or what hasn't changed. If it messes up the format for the resolution, if you could just, you know, a separate page that just says, you know, comparison, that would be good. And then the other thing, the other item that I wanted to bring up was, in Section 16, where it talks about superintendent authorized to transfer appropriate appropriations from fund to fund, I'd like to have a discussion with the board as to whether there's some language that we could add in there that would also incorporate the prioritization that the, we approved from the Budget Committee on the capital projects, that if, you know, that if the superintendent feels we need to have a project leapfrog, the others in the prioritization, that he come to us for that approval. Otherwise, you know, spend away. So I'd be interested in getting your reaction of whether, and if you think that would be an appropriate addition.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Well, first off, this will be on the action item, but we can discuss if we want to add an amendment to it or whatnot. Does everybody understand, is everybody on Section 16, where the authorization to have funds shifted to do capital projects? Jeff just kind of wants to tie it to the list that we have approved, the capital list, so that we're just going, if something comes up or money becomes available, something happens where they, they have a list to go down, and if they don't want to go down that list or something else has happened, then it comes to the board. So obviously, we'll probably give, I'll give Dr. Shepherd a minute to comment on that, too. But it just, any initial reaction or any comment, and if, you know, we can certainly have some discussion about it tonight and decide formally next week if we want to have a, an amendment to it, that's fine. By contemplating why they're thinking, do you want to make?
Uh, Mr. Chair, what, you know, what I would suggest is, on Section 16, is you've got ABC, you might just add a D to that instead of an amendment. Just add a D that would state basically what Dr. Phillips had stated there, that we would stick to the list of capital improvements that's already approved by the board, and then if the superintendent wanted to go beyond that for any particular item, that would have to come to the board and maybe put that as a D. That's what I would say.
I'm sorry, I said amendment, I guess I was thinking more of addendum.
Right, just add a D to it.
Yes. And, you know, I guess, does anybody have, have any comment, question? Dr. Shepherd, do you want to make a comment on it, or?
I think, witnessed by the fact that we've, even though we've tried otherwise, we've added to our fund balance year after year after year, and trying added to our fund balance year after year after year after year, and trying to be good stewards of the dollars, I think it's obvious that we haven't strayed from the boards and been excessive in spending. I would be comfortable with that as long as we set outside a dollar amount. I mean, I don't want our hands completely tied, so.
No, I agree. There's no point. Particularly if it's, you know, a heating system breaks in the middle of the winter, you don't want to have to wait until the board meeting to get approval to buy a new heating system. So perhaps you could think about, you know, language that would meet our desire while also allowing you to run the school system, and we can discuss it next week.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. If you want to try to draft the language, and then that way, you can think about it in a little different setting and come up with something, and we'll see if it's agreeable to the rest of the board, and we'll have it as just a little subsection D. Okay? Fantastic. You ready to key up? You got one question?
Yeah. The only thing I would caution us is, you know, the lists that we developed at the board during the budget discussion are using the TRAGO process, which is not a super-scientific process. I mean, we've been involved with it, and it's the best we have. However, now we've gone and we've hired Fanning Howe to provide us with a lot of information that we didn't have before that will help us prioritize the projects, which I expect that our maintenance organization will be using for prioritizing, in hopes that that type of information will bleed over into our budgeting process. However, there's a learning curve with that process. I would caution us to force Dr. Shepherd and his staff to follow the prioritization scheme exactly as is, but make sure that they're taking the most needy things and getting those accomplished. But I'm not totally, I don't want to tie his hands and his staff's hands to understand what's going on. Now, I know what's precipitating, what brought this about, which was some carpet replacements and some things that we didn't have full information on, and I think that maintenance has since provided us more information about those types of things, and we didn't have a bigger view of really what had actually gone on. But we caught a snippet in our Friday report about some things being fixed, but we didn't know that other things had already been on the agenda. And so it looked like we had, things had leapfrogged out of position. But we didn't have a bigger view, and now, once we got the bigger view, we understood what actually had happened, that many schools had been taken care of, that just had failed to reach the Friday report. So I just caution us to be real careful about how structured we make this amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker and Dr. Shepherd. I think you've grabbed that, and we'll run with that next week. So we'll move on to 4.03, and in the interest of time, I'll just tell the board, no, I'm sorry, 4.02, the budget amendment. This particular item is on the commissioner's consent agenda for the next item. We were there. Kelly and Dave presented it to the commissioners. This is for the design change of going to the K3 and 3.5 split. So does anybody have any question about that? And it is on their consent agenda. Anybody have a question about, is it, you okay for our consent? 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 Yes. Fantastic. We'll move on to 4.03. And Chris, you're coming to join Ed at the podium and take it away with school resource officer contracts.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Chris is going to, I'm going to get us started here, I guess, with the financial. This is really a rollover from last year, where we had a partial year contract for school resource officers. So this will be the renewal and the contract for the full fiscal year for 2014, 2015. So you guys have had a chance to review the contracts. Essentially, what it's going to allow us for is 18 new resource officers at the elementary schools. The total cost of that is just over $1 million, and one-third of that would come to us locally, with two-thirds of that amount, just over $700,000, being paid for by a grant. And Chris was really involved in the beginning of that and all the details, so he can help me out there with any questions regarding that.
Okay. Fantastic. And we will start with Mr. Walter. Questions on the resource officers?
So basically, we're able to get these officers for a third, we're only paying a third of what the cost is. Is that correct? The grant covers the rest of it, so we're getting?
Correct.
So we're getting 18 officers for the cost of six?
Yes, correct.
So I think that's a good thing. Just looking at the contract, a couple of things. I thought there was one. There's one typo on it, was under E, first sentence. After school resource officers should be provided, I think.
They what? If it's a typo?
That was just a typo.
Just email them. I love the fact that you got it and you nailed it, but just email them, and that way, we won't waste time here on the typo.
Yeah, as far as content, I don't see anything here that covers the middle school SROs.
The middle schools are currently covered with a combination of city and county, and that is paid directly by the county. So we don't even see the funds flow through us. So we do have coverage, but it's 100% paid for by the county.
Okay. Financially, operationally, is there a contract that's with them?
No.
Okay. Well, then, here's a contract that talks about SROs. I think it needs to be in there and somehow, because we're talking about the duties, we're talking about other things. I think that needs to be in there. If it's covered, that's great. We'll just put another clause in there that says it's covered and how that's covered. But I did have questions related to the duties here. We talked about the duties of the officer, and again, that goes back to the grant. If you go look at the website on the DPI site, it's got duties of school resource officers. And I think they should probably align closer to what we have in this agreement. And I just think we should also align it more closely to what they're actually, they might actually be doing. For example, you know, I know that our city officers, I don't think they do the DARE program. They do a similar program, but I think it's more towards gang awareness or gang resistance or something to that effect. But that's probably something that.
Sheriff's deputies do DARE, and city officers do not. That's right.
Well, that's something that probably should be defined. Like, we were talking earlier, it doesn't talk at all about the hours that they're going to be there. When are the school resource officers going to be at the school?
Yeah, so they operate with us, and I don't know if that's not defined because there are different operating times, but they're there 30 minutes before school and 30 minutes after, depending on when school starts. So that's an understanding that we have with them, but I don't know if it's part of the contract.
Again, it's something that should probably be included here if we're talking about duties, and we're talking about, you know, it identifies you, I guess, as a project coordinator. It's got a supervisor assigned. I think some of the officers, do they help out with traffic, that type of thing? And I think the most important thing here, that, you know, why I'm a parent and I'm glad that they're there is, I mean, they're providing law enforcement services, and they're to protect the school and investigate anything that's going on there. I think that needs to be probably item number one. But anyway, those are my comments. I think it needs a little bit of work prior to my being more comfortable with it. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
There we go. Ooh, there it is. With that, you know, Rob's brought up some points, and, you know, if you want to look over with, I hadn't seen that from DIP on that. But with that, I mean, I think there, I'm really excited about our new ones going to the elementary schools. And again, that's a bargain, and we're one of the lucky counties that got that, and I'm really excited about that. But again, we could put it on the consent, I mean, on the action agenda in between now and next week, get those earned out, and that's fine with me. But I'm ready to vote for it, and say, go for it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Yeah, after Rob's comments, I wrote action, so that's fine. Mr. Schumaker?
Well, I'll mirror what Mrs. Carpenter said. I'm ready to vote for it, and I'm really, I really applaud you for all the actions that you took last year or the last school year to get out in front on this grant, and then to get this follow-up to this grant, to get even more officers. I mean, this is a huge, huge thing, and a lot of our neighboring school districts do not have this. And we jumped out and did due diligence to get this, and I think it's one thing that the citizens of this county made loud and clear way back in a couple of years ago, that they wanted to see more of a presence, more protection for their kids, and now we're taking some time to get there, but we've finally moved to that point. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Mark. Mark, is this basically the same contract that we've used in years past, other than just minor date changes and things, school changes and that type thing?
It is similar, and the one, the extension of the addendum for the county is really the same, because we have a contract with them in place. One thing that we have suggested, as I was looking at these contracts, and also, we had a summer conference focusing on the use of SROs, is coming up with a memorandum of understanding that would go through kind of expectations for all school levels, and regardless of whether they're a sheriff or a city police officer. So that's something we've drafted, we're still working on that, and need to make sure that we get the county in agreement and the city in agreement. That way, we'd have one MOU that everyone can use and say, this is our understanding of what a school resource officer will do. I don't think it eliminates the need for these contracts. These really deal with primarily the financial terms. Since we don't have that in place, there is some description of duties here in the city contract that's consistent with what it used to be. But I think the memorandum of understanding will actually be a longer, more detailed document that really sets out, this is what they do do, this is what they don't do, and that'll apply to all organizations. So what I'd like to see, and our hope is to bring to the board at a later time, and also have to get approved by the city and the county, something that would outline, you know, more fully all those duties and descriptions. So I think our recommendation would be to go ahead and approve these contracts now to get the funding and the officers in place, and let us hammer out the details of that MOU. I think you can operate under this. I think some of Mr. Walter's points about a description of duties are well-taken, and those really should be, you know, across, really, the duties you're addressing, it doesn't matter whether it's a sheriff that is being paid for by the county, or it's an officer provided by the city. It should be the same, and that, and MOU will let us have one agreement that goes across all those entities. So that's in the works, and hopefully will be coming, you know, next month or shortly thereafter.
Well, that's a good thing, Mark, and I appreciate you having the foresight to go ahead and work on the MOU, because I think that is the right direction. Although, city policemen and the sheriff's deputies, they're not employees of the school system. They are, and it's explicit in this agreement, that they are not employees of the school system. And so therefore, they will have to be involved, both departments, the city and the county, to come up with one centralized MOU for the district. And so I think we're right on track. Other than that, I'm good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. And I hate to say this, Mark, but if it's like the school use agreement with park, active living parks, when our attorneys involved, city and the county, it'll be about 2029 before that gets worked out.
It may take, I'm hopeful it won't be as elaborate, but yes, we will have their various councils want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, I think.
That's the other reason why I wanted to, we've been talking with Chris and Kelly, who really wanted to get this proof on financial, we decided, let's break it out, because these contracts, we felt were pretty straightforward, and we can get those approved at this juncture and continue to work on an MRU that everyone is comfortable with going forward. And again, I think we've got a very good relationship with both groups. We've got the officers. We do obviously now have more in elementary schools. There's a little bit of a learning curve there. We've been working with folks in terms of what the right role is and what the SROs do. So I think, I'm hoping it won't be forever, but yeah, it's a tiered process where we can get this in place for now and bring in MOU as soon as everyone's on the same page for the board to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. At least, having the memorandum of understanding, at least to me, kind of takes care of some of the issues that Rob brought up, and I understand why, you know, we're trying to get this in place, because this is just a renewal, but to have a little more definition of maybe what we're doing on a broader scope for all the entities involved, I'm glad to hear that we're on that track.
Yeah, and in our county, we have an existing contract with the county in terms of provision that doesn't run out till 2017, I believe. So we really can't, we're not really in a position to rewrite a contract that's ongoing. So I think an MOU is the right approach to try to.
Can we get a copy of that, so we can look it over, please?
The MOU?
Whatever we've got with the county.
Whenever the time comes, it will have.
Oh, you're talking about the existing contract with the county?
Yeah, I'd like to see what it looks like.
I'm happy to send that to you. Yeah, it's referenced here in the addendum, but.
It may have more detail in it than.
It's actually, I think you'll find it less detailed than the city one. It's a short, one or two-pager, but I'm happy to share it to you. It's one that was approved a couple of years ago, I believe. It's a five-year contract. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, because, you know, relating to what Rob had said, because under, on page two, item four, it does say duties of the SRO. And then they go A, B, C, down to H, and that's why I didn't know if any of that would be, need to be changed, or if, after we approve this, if we then, when we do this other, if we would need to go back and amend this.
I mean, obviously, I've got a draft MOU that I'm already working for that is, I think, consistent with these. I've tried to leave, these are fairly general, and I think we'll find non-controversial provisions, the A through H duties. So I don't, I think this is a broad, high-level, this is what you're going to do, and then the MRU is going to provide detail. So in other words, the first thing they do is, they've helped prevent violence, maintain a safe campus. I think that's, at a high level, that's what they're doing. The detail is kind of how they're going to interact, and that'll be set forth in the MRU. So I think, and again, I've taken this primarily from the existing arrangement, because these are the things that the city SROs are used to doing. So these are all items that are from the current contract, and particularly since we're looking at it essentially a transitional stage. I think, I don't, if we need to change it, we can. I referenced the fact that we're working on our MRU in the next-to-last paragraph. In 28, it says that we're working on it, and they will expect to be a part of the, the MOU will be deemed a part of the contract when adopted. You're right. If it turns out when we sit down and they say, you know, we're going to stop doing any drug or safety education, I don't think that's the case. But if we did, we would need to come back and amend.
And amend.
And amend it to say, we're going to change those duties. Because the goal, I think, is the MOU is going to be regarded as a co-equal document with this one. And if there's, if we need to amend it, we could certainly do that.
Well, that was my, what I was wanting to see, if we could, because I know that within the policy committee, we are talking about, that was one, or in the safe, excuse me, wrong committee, in the safety committee, we had talked about, that was looking at what the elementary officers, what we're going to see their role, what we may see their role be. And so we're still kind of in the planning stages of that. Some of the things we say, yeah, that, we know that's what it'll be. It'll just be like our regular high school or middle school, but there may be other things that we see that they may be take on.
And if it makes everybody feel any better, they have, in other words, what Ms. Carpenter's referencing, the sheriff's department, in other words, Larry was part of that meeting, sit down and say, here's the duties of an SRO. A lot of them are right from what Mr. Walter's referring to. It's just informal for them to say that, and his suggestion to do something a little more formal is, when we talked about that with Mark and Sarah, said, you know what? That's exactly what we need to do. Let's just go ahead and put that in, make it separate from the contract, and then we kind of amend that separate from financials, and that's what he's working on now.
Okay. So if we can amend it, okay.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, we still have one more member to hear from. We have not heard from Dr. Phillips. Oh, I'm sorry. Or David. Sorry, I skipped right over you. Lynn is done. Go ahead, David.
I just want to say, thank God for our SROs. I pray for you. I'm grateful. I'm almost, I know some big words, and I'm kind of choked up, but I know what you do, and I appreciate what you do, and what you do is important. But I want to put it in perspective. Teachers, y'all are on the front lines, and you're impacting and earning the respect and admiration of those children every, every, every day. But those SROs are right behind you, and they've got your back, and I admire you both. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, and we will conclude with Dr. Phillips.
Thanks. Yes, I was at curriculum night at Royal Oaks the other night, talking with parents, mostly to remind them that we've got a bond election coming up in November that will help us improve facilities at Royal Oaks. But as part of that, I talked to them about the fact that they now have a full-time SRO, and they were thrilled, Deputy Hunter, absolutely thrilled to hear it. And so I was a little skeptical at the beginning when we did this, but. And, and so, I was a little skeptical at the beginning when we did this, but, but it clearly is the right decision. I'm still concerned, though, in the way that we are paying for this because as I see it, we are taking, we are paying for SROs by taking money from our education program. And I, I think if parents knew that, they would say, wait, wait, that, that, that's not right. That's not what we wanted you to do. So, can you clarify? So, there's two-thirds coming from the state, but then a third is coming from local. And did the county give us any additional money this year for paying for this?
They did not.
They did not? So, so where, so as I calculated, it's over $300,000. Where are we getting that money?
Kelly and I have talked about this issue quite a bit as I was trying to prepare in her absence. And the way she explained it to me is, in the 2013, 2014 school year, there's a process that you go through where ADM and charter schools kind of come together. Those numbers settle out, students move, they come back and forth. And at some point in time, those, those numbers finalize. And at that time, there were some decisions to be made by the board on how to spend money. So, to the best of my understanding, those numbers settled out, there were some dollars there, and, and the board made the decision to spend, based on some work that Chris had done, to gain some funds, the board voted and, and made a decision to move forward with the SRO. So, it's hard to say where the money came from, but at that time, the decision was to ma, made to move those funds or use those funds for, for the SRO contracts. So, for this year, it's simply a roll forward from, from something that was decided on in the previous year.
Okay. But because we're not getting any additional money from the county, we are having to take it from funds that otherwise would be used for education programs and-
I think, I'm sorry, I, I just, I, because I talked to Kelly too on finance, I don't think the new, I think all these new officers, in other words, the additional officers, I thought these were all grant money. Maybe I'm mistaken. In other words, we do pay for a third of the SROs, but I'm not sure we're taking more money this year for SROs than last. Am I, I may be, I may have misunderstood from Kelly because I was asking with the, with the financing, I think we're doing these contracts with additional grant money as opposed to additional. So, we are continuing to pay for ours.
The nature of the grant is a matching grant. So, if they put up two-thirds, we put up a third, so, so it is. Okay.
Then I'd be mistaken on that.
Just to quantify this, so, I, what is the total amount that we are paying for our local funds for this?
It's approximately $355,000.
Okay, so $355,000. How many teacher assistants could we get for $355,000?
Approximately 13.
13. So, so we're, that, that's-
The kind of trade-off.
Excuse me, that's the kind of trade-off that we're making here. And I'm not sure that parents really understand that we did not get any additional money from the county to pay for these SROs. And so, instead, we've had to take it from money that otherwise would have been used for educational programs. I have one specific thing in the contract, and that's in the city contract under 9A, it's dealing with high schools, and it says that it'll be a 10-month period, we'll pay SRO salaries for a 10-month period. But then in 10, 10A, we're dealing with the elementary schools, it says that we will pay SRO salaries for a 12-month period. So, I'm wondering why the difference? Why are we having SROs for 12 months in elementary schools when we only have them for 10 in, in high school?
And I think ultimately, that, that comes down to the grant. When, when I applied for the grant, it was done in positions. So, it, it ultimately kind of says, how many positions are you requesting? Six positions and we're requesting 12 matching ones. When I approached the sheriff and the chief of police to say, if this is a possibility, how can this work? How fast can you, you know, get positions filled? Both of them, the first question was, are these 12-month positions or 10-month positions? Can these be 12-month positions? Because obviously, we don't have officers that work 10-month and then are not employed the other two months. And so, I went back to the grant source to say, can we make this, can this be 12-month positions? And they said, absolutely, those are school resource officers. There are things they do in the summertime. That's definitely something that it's okay under the constraints of the grant. So, came back and discussed that with Kelly about what they wanted, and that was part of what we approached our law enforcement with in the grant and filling those positions. And the, the high school SROs have been around probably for 12 or 13 years, maybe, is that about right? Maybe a little longer, longer. Middle school is 10 or 12 years. So, I, I don't know exactly how that originated, except most of that was done with grant stuff that then in effect ran out. So, you know, two different, I guess, none of the high school SROs are being paid for out of grant money and the majority of them in elementary school are, which is where the difference in the contract comes.
So, the high school and middle school SROs during the two months when, or I should say high school because we're not paying directly for the middle school. So, the high school SROs during those two months when we're not paying for them, the city and the county are paying for them?
I assume so. I don't know that for sure, but they're, they're paying for all the middle school resource officers and I assume they pay the high school. If we're only contracted them for 10, I'm assuming they pick up the other two months.
Okay. So, what, what are the SROs going to do at the elementary schools in the summer when we don't have children there?
Okay, so, it was one of the things we discussed whenever that was part of the discussion was, okay, the, Larry, actually, I keep, keep referring to Larry since he's here, but in the summertime, they actually have a, a program that works with at-risk middle school youth called a GRAPE program. So, all of the sheriff's deputies, for example, were involved in the two-week camp where they worked with middle school students at Camp Spencer, Frankliss Park. They take the kids bowling, they take them to the water park in Greensboro. So, it's really kind of a mentoring, at-risk thing, and that's, that was two weeks this summer. All SROs are involved in SRO training, pretty much mandatory training that goes on for a week. That training was actually in Cabarrus County this past summer. Ms. Carpenter and I both attended that for, for one week. So, that's three of the eight weeks that would be in the summer. They're also, at our disposal, to be quite honest, we ran drills, active shooter drills and things this summer that pretty much if we ask them to do, they'll set up for us. So, that's not every day, but it is a lot of the day. And then there are specific trainings that they go to, search and seizure. Some of the law is a little bit different for schools now that Mark can maybe talk about, but they have week-long training, some mandatory and some not, which are specifically related to the law in school. And then some of them, and I actually think this is a plus for us, are in very specific divisions of the police. We have school resource officers who are a member of the SWAT team, we have school resource officers who are a member of the bomb team. We, for lots of reasons, want them to be trained on those things in the summer so they're not pulling them out of the school. So, I think they make a, a very big and conscious effort to do everything that they have to do in the summer. There's still some things they get pulled out of school for, but I think we were very satisfied that at least a majority or, you know, half of the, the two months in the summer were things they were doing that ultimately served the school anyway. So, again, those were things that the sheriff and the chief both requested that we were very comfortable with and feeling like they're working for us a majority of the time, even when students aren't in. Much like teachers are working to do curriculum documents like we discussed in the summer to be prepared for teaching, I, I would say they're the same, but when they're not specifically doing one of the things, then they're on patrol.
And since we are having to pay, I, I think they should be working for the schools. If, if they are going to do patrols for the city, which is a, a good thing, then the city should pay for that time, not, not the school district. That's my only complaint.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And I will echo a little bit what Dr. Phillips just said, that, and he's been very consistent because when this first came up, that's exactly the comment that he made, that we've got two buckets and we've, if we're taking money out of education dollars, it's coming from somewhere to pay for it, even though it is a grant. I mean, the, the flip side of that is, to get the grant, we got to put a little something in. It's a little bit like the field that, at, at Central, you know? To get, we, we got it for two, a third of the cost, but to get that, we had to put in a little to, to, to get it. So, in this particular case, I guess to get, we get eight, we're paying for, say the numbers again-
Six. You get 12 free.
Right. To get the 12, we got to throw in something for the, for the six. So, I don't, I, I think some of the language in the contract, the, the 10-month and the 12-month, to me is, absolutely probably needs to be worked out. There's something there that it, just when you read it and look at it, it seems like there's something missing there of why we're not being consistent. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, that the 12 came from the grant, but something needs to be, in my opinion, probably needs to be looked at and make sure that everybody's okay with the way it's worded and one's the 10 and one's the not. So, but anyway, I've got, let's see, school resource, we've got enough questions, I'd put it, I already decided to put it on action. So, we will move on.
I mean, there's a trade-off that we have to do for security. I mean, we need a safe school for, in order to teach. If we don't feel safe in the school, then you can put all the resources you want, but I think that there's a key that we need to trade, that's, that is a good trade-off that you really have to think about. And at this point, from the feedback that I'm getting back from parents, they want those officers in, in their, in our schools.
And Mr. Sheriff, I may, you may have alluded to this a moment ago, Mr. Louder, but of course, there's Kids Plus all summer long at certain facilities. There are the reading programs that we apparently will have every year going forward at every, at many facilities during the summer months. And all that traffic alone, I don't mean just car traffic, but just the presence in those buildings, I think necessitates and calls for SRO officers at those facilities in the summer. I, I think it's a, an amount well spent for the safety and the security of the children.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. The, the, I, I wasn't quite finished with my comments. The, the one caveat is that grant money runs out. You know, the field, that grant money is gone because we spent it and we have a hard thing in place that we're running and playing on. SRO grant money, you know, it's going to end one day and then we are going to be deciding how we're going to continue on or do we pull back? But that's a, that's a, that's a decision for another board. So, we will talk about, you got another comment tonight?
Well, right now, they're saying that that, that's supposed to be a permanent-type thing. It's not like most grant, that's now, that, but now when they say permanent, but this one, when they put it in, they put it in more of a permanent-type thing. It's not written like most grants. And that's the good part about-
It's part of the state budget recurring unless they go in specifically remove it, but they obviously can go in specifically-
Yeah, it's not like most of your grants. That's the good thing.
Okay. Well, well, I mean, we're going to, we're going to have a full conversation about this next week.
Well, I just wanted to just say, ask something to Mark.
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
On the middle school SROs that the county is paying for, what kind of MOU can we put in place that protects us from some arbitrary-type decisions that were, that put us at risk with our school nurses this year? Because last year, we gave them the money and everything with school nurses rather than having it as a pass-through. What can we do to protect ourselves from that one? Because that would be another huge liability that would be on this school board. And I just ask you to think about that. You don't have to respond to me now, but that's just, now that we're having this discussion and I'm looking at the bigger picture, I just don't want us to be faced with, all of a sudden now, we've got middle school SROs at risk because we didn't get the funding or because the county decided not to fund that, that operation.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Okay, we will move on to 4.04, and we will ask Dr. Van Heek to come to the podium with Ben Alred. And Ed and Chris, thank you very much for, for that.
Good evening.
Hey, Ben.
Hey. I hope you've had a time to look over the fees. You should have three, showing a three-year trend in our fees. One that I wanted to point out to you was just that the state is covering through a grant AP test fees this year, which is a huge cost to our students at $89 per test. We give thousands of tests each year, so that's a huge savings. We've not got any word about how long that will be in place. We'll keep running out of the ladder and hopefully that's a grant that's going to go in for a couple of years, which absolves our students from having to carry that cost. But I'll answer any questions you have about fees at this time.
Fantastic. And we will start with Dr. Phillips.
Maybe I should ask our attorney if I should recuse myself from this because I have a student who's taking three AP classes, so I'm really going to have a benefit here.
I think we will, we'll take that under advisement, but I'd like to get your input on the rest of the fee schedule.
No, I, I, I don't have any-
You're not voting tonight, so I'll think about it.
Okay, you think about that. I, I, I don't have any, obviously, I'm very happy that, that the state has, has provided the money to make it possible for us to waive the AP fees, and I am hopeful that that will encourage more students to, to both take the classes and to, to take the exams.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
Now, these three separate files are not the file that I requested to be combined altogether.
Would you, I have that right here if you'd like. I know I sent that. It didn't make it onto the board docs.
We got it.
We got it in email.
It's just, it's not on here.
We did get it in email. Glancing through it, it seems like many of the fees have stayed consistent over the, over the three-year period that you presented. The only fee that we cannot, well, the one fee that I think we cannot modify is the driver's ed fee. Is that correct or we can only charge a certain amount?
I'm not aware of where that fee originates. I think it comes from the state. It's included on here just to be transparent about all fees that students pay.
And I think there's a notation that we cannot go over a certain amount.
I can investigate. I honestly do not know.
That the state puts a ceiling, I believe, on that amount? Are there any particular fees that-
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, the driver's ed fee, the state ultimately says you can, this is the maximum you can charge, and they actually encourage you to charge the maximum to defer that, and that's what we do.
Okay. And, um, do these fees cover the actual expense of a band uniform, of an instrument, of, of-
So, um-
Do these fees actually cover, I don't know, 95, 90%?
That's a good question.
Of an actual cost of a course or a, an activity?
So, you know, the board policy is in place to keep fees to a minimum, right? And if you're, I know you guys weren't all on the board four years ago, but we got a lot of fees four years ago. We got a lot of fees off and try to maintain that supplemental nature. So, each year, we send those out to schools, find out the supplemental needs. This goes through a fairly rigorous discussion through cabinet. It kind of comes back and then gets put before you all. Whether it covers a full amount of a band uniform or not, I'm not sure. It's just what schools request. When fees start getting in the upper, like 25, 30, 45, $50, we start asking a lot of questions about those fees and try to keep those as low as possible. Most, if not all, these fees are supplemental in nature, except for those fees around the advanced placement test or driver's education or things like that.
So, where does the difference come from?
Very good question. If it's banned, I assume that that comes from band boosters and some school funds, et cetera.
From fundraising activities at-
Absolutely.
At the school. Oh, parking fees, great, that's a good example, excellent example. Thank you.
And I think it's good to notice that these fees are actually not those associated with extracurricular activities. So, when you see banned, and that is, that's talking about the class that you take for the band. So, that's covering things like sheet music. And the expanded document, I don't have that in front of me, but I know you're looking at it. Each one of those has a justification, and we try to make sure that the fee that's listed for justification is tied to a very specific purchase. So, it's not just discretionary funds that a teacher can use that, I'm going to collect $10 or $15 and then apply that as I want. But we try to make sure, and you can see that with the AP fees, that it's for a particular supplemental material. So, it's not for anything arbitrary that the teacher decides, or then that money is then kept and then used in some other way. Try to make sure it's tied very tightly to a specific cost.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu, do you have any comment on the fee schedule?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the fees that we have before us here are very fair and reasonable, and I'm good for consent.
Thank you. Mr. Schumaker?
I'm the same. I feel like these fees, I feel like we've done a really good job of keeping our fees low. Unfortunately, they're going to rise. One question I do have about the driver's ed, I know that the state said that we could cap it at $65, but we've elected not to do that this year, or is that going to affect next year?
That always becomes a controversial thing each year, and this past year, it was up as a possibility to not be funded at all. And at the last minute, it was. And my understanding is the last indication was, okay, we're going to do it one more year, but we're going to cut all driver's ed funding starting for next school year. We'll wait and see if that actually comes true, but they certainly tried to telegraph that a little bit, that that was what was coming.
Right. But we would only be able to charge a max of $65. That would be next year.
Yeah, they set a maximum each year and strongly encourage districts to do it. They try to actually penalize you if you don't charge that fee to say, look, you have this way to bring in money for this. Why aren't you doing it? So, we've tried to comply with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter?
It's ironic that these fees come up. I was just, a lady got me in the parking lot the other day, and she was just ironic, I'd be just up, very upset, that she said we were charging $5 for locker fees. For, and, and I don't see anything on any of these fee schedules for locker fees.
So, the only thing I can think of is a deposit for a locker. I don't know that that would be considered a fee, but many times, schools check out locks to students and charge a deposit fee for those locks.
Well, she, I asked her, I said, she said, no, they were charging for the lockers. Now, can we check this out? But she said it was five, and, and when she said that they did have to get the locks from the schools too. And I said, you sure it wasn't for the locks? But she said, oh, they're charging for the lockers. And she said, that was just terrible. So, do we charge $5? But I didn't even see for lockers, I mean, for locks, because I looked on the fee schedule to see if we were charging $5 for locks. But I didn't see anything for lockers.
I'm not aware of a locker fee. We ask our schools each year to tell us what fees that they charge to students, and we are very explicit that we want all fees for supplemental materials. But we also know we have a lot of new staff, and sometimes people charge fees and don't go through the process. So, we'll investigate that.
Well, I didn't see it. I looked. So, will you let me know?
There's three heads, all shaking no, right here on the front row, that we do not charge for lockers. So, I don't think, I'm not sure there's anything to investigate. I mean.
Do we charge for, if we do, we need to have, if we're charging for the locks. But this lady, but this lady was very upset.
No, we don't charge for lockers. It's a rental fee for the lock from the school, and it's an optional fee because, to be honest with you, kids don't use locks much anymore. Hickory Ridge was built with 500 lockers, with 1,500 kids, and that's just fine. So, that's why it's not there.
So, is, it's for the lock, then?
That's correct.
All right. Should we put, because there's no fee down here listed for lock?
It's optional.
Well, there's some that say optional, like the MS uniform. That is optional, and it's listed on here. So, if we've got optional ones on here, if you're going to have a $5 lock, and it says optional.
So, I think that the word optional is misleading. So, it's the option for the school to charge the fee versus the option for a student to purchase a lock. Because the student could purchase a lock for their locker from Walmart or anywhere, but they're just purchasing it from the school. Is that accurate?
Well, now, they said they, now, my understanding that they can't do that because the system has to have a, a key, because they've got to be able to get into the property.
For certain purposes.
Is that correct? Because they can't bring their own.
That's correct.
So, they have to get, it's not optional. We have to have that.
Sounds good.
So, it isn't optional. See, I knew that part. So, we do, we do charge for locks, but not the lockers, right?
It's a rental fee.
A rental fee for the, the lock.
And you don't have to rent it.
And you don't have, if you want the lock, if you want the locker, you've got to have a lock on it, right? Okay, so.
No, you don't have to have one. But anyway, we'll get it.
You don't have, okay.
You don't want one, you don't have to have one, but I don't know why you get a locker and not lock it.
Okay, but it is for the lock. Okay, that was my, but that was the only question that was asked of me. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Rob?
Yeah, I had a little question on that optional, too. What does it mean, optional fee for purchase of a middle-school PE uniform?
It's for sale. Some students, you can provide your own uniform if you want to, as long as it meets the criteria, or they're for sale from the school.
Okay, I thought they had to have a specific uniform for each, each school. I thought that was required. But you're saying it's not, they can wear something other than?
Again, I can check into the specifics. I don't want to misstate again, but I'm pretty sure that PE teachers would provide, you know, gray shorts, gray shirt. You can buy that at a store where you, you buy it and want to buy it cheaper, you can. But if it's a, from the school, it's, it's an optional for the student.
Okay. And the PE for the high school, is that, if you take a, are these separate classes? Or are these, if you're just going to take a PE class?
Are you looking farther down where it says athletic trainer, sports medicine?
Yes.
Yeah, those are specific courses that are outside of the normal PE health class that's required for all ninth graders. And so, those would be supplemental costs for those courses.
Okay. And then my last question, it says on the bottom here, any fee opposed will be waived or reduced for students who demonstrate a real economic hardship. How do they do that? Or how is that done?
Typically, that's associated with students who have applications on file for free reduced lunch, and schools handle that at the local level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Everybody okay with consent?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. We will do that. Well, they are going to update the list for the rental fee for the lock.
I'll update it. You'll get a copy.
Okay, we'll move on to, we'll ask Dr. Louder to come back. 4.05, policies revisions on first reading.
Okay, a lot of our policies, we tried to group this last group over the, several groups over the, over this year with similar topics. Most of these are related to technology. There are some others that are at the bottom. I will say that we've worked as a policy committee, spent a lot of time on technology use policies. One, because everybody's using it every day, and two, because it changes every day and gets a little faster and a little better. So, Mark and Sarah really led the way on trying to write that generally, so it would meet the standards of what we needed to do, instead of trying to bullet out everything that you use, and then three months later, that changes. So, and, and Dr. Probst, obviously, with her department, has led some of that, too, on what's the best way to make sure we're governed by a policy as simple as possible. And so, earlier today, Mr. Walter pointed out something to Mr. Enriquez and myself on technology responsible use that ultimately doesn't necessarily coincide with that, and he's absolutely right. So, we're just going to pull the first one, technology and responsible use, and take that back to committee to make the change that's there. Because again, it's not really consistent with what we said before. We'll, we'll work on that in two weeks when we have the policy committee. And then we can begin with, I didn't have any other questions that I'm aware of from board members for any of the other policies going down, so I will certainly try to take those if there are any.
Okay, we'll just glance through them here pretty quick. Does anybody have anything for 3226, 3227, 3410?
Yes.
Okay, 3410, Dr. Phillips?
So, that's the testing and assessment.
Testing, yes.
I have a problem with the very first sentence that's added. It says, "In addition, data from tests and assessments provide measures of student learning that are useful for evaluating educator effectiveness." Now, I'm assuming that this came from the state and not from our own staff.
Right.
I personally disagree with that statement. I don't think there's research that can prove that. In fact, I think that it can show, there's research that shows it's not true. So, I would recommend we just not put it in. So, that's my first comment. And then, my second comment is more of observation under B, well, what used to be B and it's struck out as test administration. What we're deleting is the sentence, "The instructional staff is responsible for the development and administration of the testing program." And we are replacing it with, "The superintendent or designated shall develop security and administration procedures for the state testing program and other assessments consistent with the state Board of Education requirements." So, in other words, we are ceding complete authority. Teachers are no longer responsible for testing, and it's all the state. And I, I think that's a crying shame. And unfortunately, I, I'm afraid it is true, but then therefore it should be in the policy. But I think it is a sad commentary on the direction of public education policy.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And, and Mr. Walter, you keyed up on this one as well.
Well, I'll, I'll skip on that one, but I think you covered some points.
Well, then, before we move on, let's resolve that. Are we, A, can we take out that first sentence?
I believe you.
And is the rest of the board in favor of taking it out?
I, I think you can, because this is really the aspirational part. If that, if the board does not think that's right, I don't think you should have to have it in your board policy. So, that's a policy. I believe that's a policy decision. So, I, I think you can take it out if you want.
Okay.
So, strike out the red.
Board members, anybody have any objection to striking out, or, or what Dr. Phillips has proposed?
So, we're striking the last, the last sentence in the first paragraph, the red sentence.
Just the red sentence in the first paragraph.
Okay. And the other one, I don't think we can change. Your, your objection is duly noted. All right, Mr. Walter, is yours 3420 the next one down?
I think it was 3227. Is that the one?
Oh, you're going back up. Okay, 3227?
I'm just saying, we, we have a policy here. It says we, each page of the system-related website must include a reference or a hyperlink. We're not, when I checked, I didn't see that. But we're putting, we should be putting our policies on there. I mean, if that's something we need to do, then we need to look into.
And where is that specific?
Five A, I think.
Each page of it.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. Look at that, and if it's something, if it says we're supposed to be doing it, we need to be doing it. And if there's a reason we're not, I guess, bring, you know, send it to the committee and have something come back to us. Is that satisfying? Okay.
Okay.
All right. And so, now, we're at 3420.
I had some comments on that, yes.
Yep.
You know, I'm not an educator. I'm a parent, and this is kind of confusing to me when it says, "The board believes students should progress to the next level of study only when they are proficient in the knowledge of application at the current curriculum level." Is that the next grade?
Can you tell us where you are?
First paragraph, paragraph A, first sentence.
Oh, there's no, there's no change on that. But you just, so you're just making a general comment?
I'm saying that it's confused, it's, it's not, it's confusing, or can be confusing or hard to interpret. And I think we need to, I don't know if it could be interpreted or go back to the policy committee and have it interpreted to explain it a little bit better, but I, I think that's, that's confusing.
Okay, so, the, the paragraph A, purpose, well, I guess we'll just maybe make an asterisk of that and have a discussion with Mark and Sarah and, and the rest of the committee.
I mean, it goes back to the promotion standards and all that, all that.
Well, if there's something amiss there, then the policy, you know, the policy committee can, can make a determination. I don't think we're going to look at the full amount and the full bore. You know, what, what we're here tonight is whatever the changes are. If there's something with that specific policy that's bigger than just what the changes are.
I'm okay with the current changes as it is or isn't anything, but, but yes. But I would like the policy committee to, to look at this policy and try to define that, that better.
Mr. Walter, just a question for clarity for my own self. You know, this policy's been around for a long time, as you check, you know, it's been around. What would be your justifications to want to change the first line of this? I mean, because if the students are not progressing in their knowledge and their application of the current curriculum, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. You want to alleviate from that?
No, I think what my point being is, is this a promotion to the next level, or is it a promotion to the next level of study within a certain program? And that's where the confusion was for me when I looked through this policy.
Okay. I think, well, what we'll do is, again, if the changes are okay, we'll leave those alone. Just make a note at committee level that there's been, you know, the, a board member has made an objection to the policy as a whole, and just review it. And if there's something there that needs to come back, it needs to come back. But I don't think tonight, we're not going to dissect the entire policy here tonight. So, okay. We'll move on to 3460, 6225, 6524. Okay, so that's all the ones on first reading. So, the first one is pulled. Can we put these on consent as long as the 3410, the red sentence on the first paragraph is removed? Okay, all right. Is that, Ms. Monroe, you okay with that? And you understand what we're doing there?
I just want to make sure for my clarification and Ms. Monroe. And also, now, the promotion and accountability, if we send that back to the committee, that will not be on the agenda for, so two are.
No, the changes are fine. The policy as a whole, at the next scheduled policy meeting, you can just take up that one as a, as a, the full thing and as an overview.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, and we'll move on to 4.06, policies on second reading. And these, I guess we, is everybody just look to see whatever changes we asked for the first time have been?
I haven't had any questions or any comments.
Yeah, I didn't see any either that came, came my way. So, any comment or question on any of these? Everybody okay for consent?
I just had a couple, and I hadn't gone back to see if you included them. But on the 4333, I did get an email today about Mark, because I asked, what is the definition of a terrorist threat? And I think Mark had included some. I just think we need to spell it out. Can't keep using this word without really what it means.
I, I take that back. I said I didn't get questions. Mr. Schumaker did send me some comments for that. They were easy to fix, and I think they were within, but you're absolutely right. I should have brought that up. So, one of those is to define terrorist activity, which Mr. Enriquez has done, to kind of space that out. One of those was a, a definition of what to send law enforcement. We've already taken care of that. And the third one was, instead of referring to phones, it was just to talk about mobile technology, which will change.
Personal mobile technology.
Right. So, all three of those, we can change pretty easily.
And all I asked them to do on the, the one with the police was to assure that we provided them the full campus.
Yes.
View, even though they might have the architectural view, but a full campus view based on some things that I participated in over at AL Brown when they did their drill. It's, it's good for them to have a, something that shows the whole campus and all the buildings, so they know what they're dealing with.
Okay. Were you okay if, do you want that on action, so you can see it come back?
No, that's on consent.
Okay, on consent.
They were all very simple.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Louder. And we will ask Dr. Van Heekel and Ms. Bridget Jones to come to the podium for the NCSBA Award for Excellence in Educational Programs.
Good evening. My pleasure to introduce Ms. Jones. This comes at the request of the board to present something to the North Carolina State Board of Education Association for an award. And so, Ms. Jones is going to talk to you about what we plan to present.
Hello. I think that we have a really good chance of winning the, or at least being a contestant in the Excellence in Educational Programs Award for the recognition of our K-12 STEM pipeline. There were 19 types of possible programs that fell under the umbrella for this award, and the STEM pipeline hit 13 out of the 19. The award proposal focused on two elements, a program summary and also the board's leadership role. In the summary section, we discussed the national attention that we received from the innovation, investing in innovation award from the U.S. Department of Education. And we also discussed the four targeted areas, which are our problem-based learning, technology integration, professional development for our teachers, and extensions of learning for our students. And in terms of the board leadership section, we focused on your forward thinking and systematic approval of our STEM schools based on the national need for STEM-ready workforce, your support of strong leadership in our schools, your attendance of celebrations and academic programs, your continued support for our students, teachers, and schools, and your guidance for other districts to adopt a similar approach. And after reviewing the documents, do you have any questions that I can address?
Great. Well, thank you very much for being here. We certainly do appreciate it, and we're glad to have a program that we think high enough to, to send up and try to be nominated and win an award. But for questions or comments from the board, we'll start with Dr. Phillips.
I'm glad I didn't have to pick the one program to submit, because I think we've got lots of things to crow about in this district. But this is certainly one that's very worthy, and knock on wood, it wins.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
We just thank you for all this work and for your efforts to make a lot of people see that we shine. We know that we shine with these programs as it is, and getting this attention, hopefully getting the award itself, will be even more positive light on the fact that our programs are very strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu?
I think we've got a good chance to get this. So, thanks for all your hard work.
Fantastic. Mr. Schumaker?
I know we've put a lot of time into this, and you've put a lot of hard work, as well as Jason and the, and the whole curriculum group. I know this is a growing, the STEM program has been growing for several years, and it's still trying to find itself. I mean, we had, Mr. Brookhart was working with the state at a state level to try to, and I don't know if you want to put that in there, but, you know, we did have someone sitting on the state committee to help draw up the guidelines for this STEM program to kind of make it as, as rigorous and as, as documented as well as the IB program is. And I think that that's, it's a really, a credit to where we've, where we're going with it, as to how well we're starting to document it. I don't know if the, our curio product figures into this, but if it's an opportunity, another thing to put in there, you might want to also include if that is a part of what you're doing with that. what you're doing with that, and if that was maybe a part of the leading edge. And then when I was, Ms. Carpenter and I, over at, one young man got, a group of students got a grant for an app.
At J. and Freeze.
That was at J. and Freeze, yes. And I don't know that that app, you know, there was another stage to that, which is this year, where these, these, these folks are going to go out and, and actually have someone help develop the app for them for this homework module that they had come up with. I don't know if that's an anecdotal evidence that goes into this, but I'm, I'm just really excited about what you've done. Our process is not completely firm. Every process has little bugs in it, and we're still working all the bugs out, but I think this is something that we can definitely elevate, and we're still learning with.
The app did go in with our supporting material.
Wonderful.
So they will be able to read about that.
Great, great.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter?
And I think that we were over there, and those, those young people, they were just great. And I think it was great, too, when we had the open house over at Central with the Chamber of Commerce and got the business community involved with that, and let the community see all the work, and the students had all their projects out lined up. But that was getting the community into, there to see what the students were doing, and that was very well attended. And we really enjoyed that. But another thing, we were talking about how great we are, the ones that didn't see the Tribune on Sunday, seeing Dr. Shepherd jumping up, saying 88 percent dropout, you know, that, that's where our dropout rate is, so we're getting close to 90 percent. The other way, well, we're not, I mean, graduation rate, excuse me! Boy, I'm doing wrong. We are, not, but, the other way. But we are, we have really come a long ways, where our graduation rate is now at 88 percent. Correction here. But, maybe that's why you were jumping up and down. But no, we, we've come a long way, so we've got a lot to be. I, I remember this board all saying, "That was our number one, Lynn, that was one of your biggies." And we were all working, and we've done so many good things. SCIM program being one of the big things that really has helped us with that. That SCIM program and early college, a lot of different things, but all these things have helped us get there. And that graduate, I mean, I keep saying graduate, but that, that has been, been a big factor with that. So we're doing wonderful things, and thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm with Lynn, I think we're going to make it.
I hope so.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And Dr. Shepherd, if I'm not mistaken, when, when you got here with this graduation rate 74.7?
Something like that was.
Something like that? So that's a big jump in four or five years. So, I mean, that is a lot of hard work on your behalf and the staff's behalf and the teachers and everybody that supports Cabarrus County Schools, so that is, that is absolutely tremendous, so. I don't think we've ever, we haven't had two rounds of applause since I got here. We're, we're on a roll, so.
And Mr. Chairman, I want to add, just for a minute to that, you know, that's a 14% increase, but when you look at 14%, that's literally, over the last five or six years, it's literally hundreds and hundreds of children that graduated that otherwise would not have graduated. Dr. Shepherd, I appreciate all you've done, because like Carolyn said, you know, this was one of the things, when you came in 2008, that was one of the primary things. We got to get our graduation rate up, and you've done an excellent job. Thank you.
Yes, yes, you have. And I, I truly believe the PLC and the early college and things like that, I mean, has a direct correlation to that number, but the magnet and STEM, absolutely. Mr. Walter, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, we are doing a lot of good things in Cabarrus County Schools, and STEM program has been absolutely one of those. I mean, I want to commend you. I went out to the summer, summer program that you, the Nassau camp that you put on this summer, and the engagement of those students was just outstanding. It was amazing how, how excited they were about learning and science, and I think we're doing great things here with, with professional development. I think we're doing, the PBL process, I think, is, is a great learning tool. We're doing good things in high school as well, and then especially the community partnerships, as Carolyn pointed out. Those are all good things. My issue, though, is I think it might be a little bit too early to say that we want to repeat our, just repeat this yet until we fix the issues that we have on the middle school level. I mean, I think the highest, high stakes testing with no opportunity to retake, to, that we're not even using a science test for, to qualify if a student could be, stay in that program. The, the issue about 40, 40 children leaving that, being asked to leave that program, that we have a pipeline of 207 kids, but we only have 108 spots. That's, so there's 100 kids there that aren't able to continue on a pipeline, and we, as a board, need to do something to, to improve that at the middle school level. There's a lot of things I would, I would like to see us address the middle school issues prior to going on and saying, "Hey, this is completely worth repeating." But I thank you for your efforts, and I'd like to see it on the action agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walter. And we will put that on action. And Ms. Jones, thank you very much for being here. We certainly do appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. And we'll move on to 4.08. We will ask Mr. Meehan and Mr. Burnett back and discuss the architect fee for the new elementary school, which we've already seen in the budget amendment, so this should be pretty fast.
We would hope so. Yeah, with a reconfiguration of the new elementary school going K-2 and 3.5, we're looking for a change order in architectural fees in order to do that to the tune of about $95,000. And, Mr. Burnett, you want to follow up a little bit on that? You took care of it?
I think that will suffice. Board members, we, we, I, I'm not, I'm hesitating a minute. I was going to state, and I guess I will, we, we were questioned the other night at the commissioner meeting about this. Well, isn't this $94,000 you could be doing something else with? We were not asking for additional money, we just want to move from one category to another. So just, as long as everybody on this board understands, we're just moving from one category to another because of the change in doing the, the new elementary school. And, you know, the, Dave and Kelly answered the questions, I didn't want to get in the middle of it, and you guys did, did fine, and you answered the, the questions. And the, the fact is, we made the decision as this board to split the elementary school off because of the location and the close proximity, and that is absolutely the right thing to do. The question was, well, why didn't you just do that from the first place? Well, that's, you know, that's a valid question, but that's hindsight. Well, you know, we made the best decision we could at the time we made it with the information we had on that particular day. So that's, anyway, that's a little how that went, but again, it is on their consent agenda, so I think all the ducks are in a row. This is just the formal department asking us for the change order to complete the transaction. So does anybody have any objection for this? Does anybody have a question or a comment? Are you okay with consent?
What is, again, what is the savings again, from going from a three, from a K-5 to a 3.5?
There are, there are two items of savings. One was $750,000, and that was a program savings, and that was a square footage reduction. The other was a, the schedule change, which resulted in about $800,000 savings. So total in that was about $1.5 million. However, we did have the costs, we had some costs in there. So what we were advertising was about $1.4 million savings.
Okay, so $1.4 million for $95,000.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Everybody okay with consent? Okay? Fantastic. All right, we'll keep these two gentlemen at the podium and move on to 4.09.
And that is the abandonment of State Road 1451 at the, the Odell School Drive, and the state has basically asked, and we have agreed, that we would like to go ahead with that abandonment and basically the school system take it over. It's almost a necessity in order for us, with the design of the property, that we do that.
Okay, board members, anybody have any questions? And we'll start, we'll, we'll start with Mr. Walter.
I just think you need another whereas clause that says what we're going to do with the property. I mean, tear it down or, for a new school or whatever. Just so it's clear, I mean, if you're, if you're not familiar, you're going to have no idea what's going on.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter?
Is this our, this is our existing road, or is this the one we're building?
This is an existing road that the state has on their books to maintain, so we're demolishing that road, and we're going to be building the new school basically on top of it. The road goes away.
But that's the one we, that's there now?
Currently, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's what we're doing, okay. And that, that's why I was wondering, that looked like the one that was there now. Okay, that's mine.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker?
I'm fine with.
Okay, Mr. Schu, you're good? Mr. Harrison?
I'm just driven by recently, and, and obviously, the road is not used for anything except for the demolition trucks that are, that are doing the work there, so it, it, I don't believe it has any impact to the neighborhoods around there.